Good evening. I'd like to call to meeting to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, May 21st, 2018. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
We have a quorum. Next item is approval of the minutes from the May 7th meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, those minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Next up is public input. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council at this time?
I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Burnett Underwood, and I didn't get an opportunity to write mine out, so I just would like to say that I am, along with many others, in the Dr. Ellis subdivision, is continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem.
We have another card from Eldress Melinda Carr. She does not want to address the council but wants to express continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and the historic impact. Anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Thank you. We do have one more proclamation to read tonight. If Mr. Bill Gray would come up here, please. And this is National Public Works Week. So, whereas public works projects, facilities, and infrastructure are vital to the city of Urbana's continued growth and economic success, supporting job creation and development in transportation, education, public safety, sustainability, and other sectors that are essential to building livable neighborhoods and communities; and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from the city of Urbana who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, plant, and maintain the transportation, urban forest, fleet, sewers, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens; and whereas the community recognizes the contributions of dedicated public works professionals and extends sincere appreciation for their commitment to excellence and their efforts to improve and enhance the health, safety, welfare, and prosperity of those in the city of Urbana. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolfe Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the city of Urbana, Illinois. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public work services and to recognize the contributions with which public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not only in this week but throughout the year. There you go. Congratulations. Okay. Second on the list under public input is the budget presentation by Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan and myself.
You have five minutes.
Well, good evening. Thank you for being here. Joining me today is Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan, and we're going to be presenting the fiscal year 19 budget for the city of Urbana. Before I start, I wanted to acknowledge the contributions of staff in the finance department, especially Sophie Fenn and Don Ho, all the department heads, the managers, the chiefs, and really all the respective city staff members were contributing to this budget. This was a joint effort. The budget presentation today focuses on our general fund. This is the fund from which we pay the bills for the daily operations of the city. So the complete budget is posted on the city's homepage. There's a link from the homepage to the budget, and a printed copy is available for viewing in the city clerk's office if you'd like to see it there. We probably ought to put one in the library, now that I think about it.
There is one in the library reference section.
Great, okay. So ample opportunities to view the budget. So the budget that we're presenting today represents a significant step forward over where we were last year. As you recall, in our financial forecast and the discussions we had, the context for this is that the city is facing a structural deficit. Our expenditures are outpacing our revenues. We have, we must restore adequate funding to our police and fire pensions. We have to rebuild city reserves to the point where it meets the minimum required in our financial guidelines. And this year, we also have to start thinking about how to address the millions of dollars backlog in infrastructure maintenance and repairs that have to be done. So everything we have done in this budget is, represents a, trying to take a realistic approach to our finances, to be transparent upfront, and to meet the challenges head-on. And so this, this budget this year is a step in, is the first step really in that direction. We'll be on the path to full funding. We are going to give ourselves a little breathing room in addressing the structural deficit. We'll be assessing and planning for infrastructure maintenance and repair, and we're going to do the best we can to prepare, to prepare for any further fallout from the state budget crisis. I expect there will be other shoes to drop, but we just don't know what they will be. But we're going to try to become a little more resilient as we go throughout the year. So given this backdrop, there's very little new in the way of expenditures, and we do have over, slightly over $600,000 in proposed budget reductions. Just for some context for our economic and financial outlook, the University of Illinois, of course, is the anchor in our county, in our region, you could argue. The payroll is going to be approaching a billion dollars coming year. We welcome over 45,000 students from around the country and around the world, which greatly enriches our community at every level. The healthcare sector is our second-largest employer, employs about 8,600 in the county, and when you combine education, healthcare, government, and the private sector, these employers bring really thousands of people to Urbana daily. Try to get a handle on the estimate, the number of people coming into the city to work in Urbana. Our daytime population is higher than our, than our regular population, and it seems to be close to 20,000 people when you include employees coming into the U of I campus. So Urbana is, is a city that provides jobs and attracts people to the city on a daily The U of I flash index shows that the state economy is growing modestly. Our property tax assessments in Urbana increased by 2.18% for the 2017 tax levy. This was the second year of real growth since the recession. This growth was driven by increases in existing property values, as well as by about $8.1 million in new construction that were added to the tax rolls. Our Champaign-Urbana area unemployment rate is relatively low at 3.8%, and the city of Urbana has relatively little debt. Well, in fact, it's not relative, it's very little debt for a city our size. 5.3 million in general obligation debt outstanding. If no new debt is issued, we'll be free of debt by the end of 2023. So that really gives us flexibility going forward in making decisions, some key decisions for the future. We have a number of tools have been established in the last couple of years to support economic development, and my staff and I have been working tirelessly to that end, to take advantage of these tools and to promote sustainable development in the city. We have three TIF districts. Our central TIF district alone are going to bring opportunities for development. We currently have four active agreements in the central TIF district leveraging 4.4 million in private investment. These include the Broadway Food Hall, the Stevens Building, the Cohen Building, and Blackbird, future development. The Enterprise Zone was also established a couple of years ago to support new construction. Twenty commercial projects are underway, to private cost of $10 million, and estimated 160 new and retained jobs. The Think Urbana program for residential new construction will result in 52 new one- and two-family housing units, plus another 33 in the Kerr Street planned unit development, with a value of over $19.5 million. We just learned today that the governor included two areas of Urbana in the Opportunity Zone program. Not sure exactly what that will mean for the city, but it is intended to spur private investment in what have been traditionally underserved areas of the, of the community. And one of the zones includes the, a couple of our TIF districts and along North Lincoln Avenue, so that should, where there are a number of developable, developable sites as well, so that should help there. We've experienced, we've, we've completed two major road projects, North Lincoln Avenue and Airport Road, both to support better connectivity in those areas and to serve the residents and businesses up there. We have a couple of multifamily housing projects underway. One is new construction at 809 West Nevada. The other is the renovation of the historic sorority at 1404 South Lincoln. We're evaluating proposals for the 200 block of North Vine Street. It's known as the Goodyear Block, and we've, documents are being prepared for the construction of housing units on the Illinois American Water Company site at Lincoln and University, and plans are under review for 5.2 million renovation of Aspen Court. So, and we're also fielding a significant number of calls from potential investors and developers. So there's, there's a lot of interest in Urbana, and it has increased over the years, so that's very, very encouraging for, for going forward. So the budget today, and proposed today, again reflects a shift in the financial perspective compared to, to years past, again emphasizing that the focus today is on the General Operating Fund. That's where we pay the city's bills for the daily operation of the city. In past years, the city used some short-term strategies to balance the budget. These strategies included taking money from the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund to balance the general fund budget. We deferred payment of the annual MetCAD fee for a couple of years, and that supports the countywide 911 system. We reduced funding, and this is a key one, we reduced funding for police and fire pensions from what's recommended by our actuary to the minimum required by state law in order to balance the budget. This minimum is not enough to adequately fund the pensions, and we all know what a slippery slope that is from, from experience at the state level. And some costs for various services were shifted to other funds. This all allowed the budgets to be balanced in past years, but these are short-term strategies, and we can't, and we don't want to use them anymore because it leads to long-term problems. So budgets going forward are going to face our problems head-on and get us back on a road to a sustainable and, and more resilient financial future. So it's going to take some short-term disciplined and difficult decisions, but in the long term, we're going to be on a sound financial footing, a resilient, have a more resilient economy, and at the same time, we'll be making, we'll be growing our tax base. And I do want to point out that this year, we've also focused on actions that have helped the city become more efficient and effective in serving the public. The biggest one has been an enormous effort that the finance department has led in getting the city onto a new financial software system. This, this is a huge improvement and will really help us, well, help every aspect of what we do. We've also moved rental, things like rental registration were moved online, so it's more convenient for landlords, and with two-thirds of our properties, two-thirds of our households being rental, we have a lot of people who do business with the city of Urbana as landlords. We have implemented the use of building safety software, which also makes us more efficient and effective, and really helps people collaborate across departments. And our new city administrator will, we've hired a city administrator, and we expect her to begin work on June 4th, and that also is going to be an immense help in, in becoming, operating the city effectively. So as far as this budget that's being proposed, there's very little in the way of new spending. What we are spending, what we are doing is going to follow along the lines of improving productivity and efficiency. We are going to update our employee scheduling and time entry software. That'll cost $21,000 annually, with an additional first-year cost of $25,000. This system will be compatible with our new financial software system, Munis, so everything should fit seamlessly. The city's website will be updated at a cost of approximately $25,000. This is designed to make the website more user-friendly, so that when you're, when the public especially, or actually even employees are searching for something, it's, it's going to be easier to find what you're looking for. It should improve flexibility, and most, very importantly, it will make it more adaptable to use on mobile devices. Most people look at our website on their phones, not on a computer anymore, and we need to have a website that, that people can use on their mobile devices. The licensing software will be costing about $5,000 annually. That will help us do things like liquor licenses online. Right now, those are all paper files, and lots of paper involved. So we'll, we'll have liquor licensing and several other types of licenses. There's a one-time cost of $12,000 for implementation. So that's going to simplify administration of our many licensing functions, and again, most of those are manual, paper-based processes right now. And again, these will integrate with our new financial system. There's a number of smaller items, very small items, increasing $3,000 for marketing, the Think Urbana program. We have increased fees for several organizations we belong to, and there's an extra $1,000 for EMS training for firefighters. The Capital Improvement Plan highlights, you'll, you'll get a detailed report on the Capital Improvement Plan next week by Public Works, but just a few highlights. The EMCOR project continues on Green Street. Overall, this is a nearly $50 million massive reconstruction project to, to improve safety and flow of traffic in the campus area, but our, our part of it involves Green Street, and the final phase of this project will rebuild Green Street from Lincoln, Bucy Street to Race Street. So Green Street will become a complete street, and it will become the main connector between campus and our downtown, which is one of the reasons we're looking very closely at the Lincoln Square site. Facility planning, the request for proposals has gone out for a consultant to conduct the space, programming needs assessment and space needs study, and an overall facility master plan. This will be taking place over the course of two years. This will give us much-needed information about the condition of our facilities, how our employees are working together, our space needs going into the future, and will help us plan for, for future needs. There's a lot of changes taking place in how, how, how people are utilizing space and, and offices, and, and we really have an opportunity to position ourselves for, for the future with, with this study, so I'm looking forward to that. Several street resurfacing projects. We wish we could do more, because a lot of our streets are in lousy condition, there's no other way to describe it, but this is what we're planning for this year. Lincoln Avenue from Green Street to University, and I believe points north, but at least to University. Springfield Avenue from Gregory Street to Kohler, Race Street from California to Washington. And again, there'll be a lot more detail on the Capital Improvement Plan next week. It's time to update the Stormwater Master Plan. It was last done in 1980, I believe. And again, we'll be exploring options for how to address the backlog in our infrastructure needs over the coming year, which amounts to millions of dollars in unmet needs. And that will all be detailed, or a lot of this will be detailed next week. This budget provides for a few revenue adjustments, or enhancements, as they're called. The significant one is that we're going to, we're proposing to increase the downtown parking meter rates from 25 cents an hour to 50 cents an hour. These were last increased in 1986. $50,000 of the funds generated will go to the general fund for, to help maintain the downtown landscaping. That's the flowers, the, the, basically the landscaping that adds so much to the appearance and attractiveness of our downtown. The rest of the funds will go to the parking fund, to the parking fund. And I would like to remind folks that there still will be free parking after 5:00 on weekday evenings and on weekends. So these parking meter increases apply to daytime weekday times only. And then we, as we discussed last, last week, we're, proposal to increase, very modest increase in our user fees for a number of our activities, and that basically keeps pace with increasing costs. The budget reductions proposed in this budget total about $623,000, and I, I wanted to thank, take note, take a minute to thank staff who've, who've participated in this, this difficult process, and employees who have given suggestions. And we've received some suggestions, which are very useful as far as which kinds of grants that we could apply for, for some much-needed equipment. And then we've had smaller suggestions, such as a couple of our employees looked into the cost of purchasing business cards. And what, what you find when you're, when you're in a city like this, you do something over and over again, year after year, without really stopping to, to look at how much we're paying or why we're doing this. And in this case, we looked at our vendor for business cards. We've been purchasing business cards from a vendor in Indiana, of all places, and they were, you know, two-color ink, embossed ink, and very, very nice cards, but they were very expensive, you know, these, for, for business cards these days. So our employees did a lot of research, and they have located a local vendor here in Champaign-Urbana, and redesigned the card, went with less fancy printing, and we're saving about $21 per box of 500 cards. So even things like that add up to savings when you, when you, when you do that over and over again in a budget. So we're looking at large savings, we're looking at small. So among the budget reductions we're proposing, number, first on the list is, we're proposing closing the Urbana Civic Center, effective December 31st, 2018. This will be discussed next week? Yes, there'll be a presentation on this topic next week, but just in summary, we're losing $40,000 to $50,000 a year on the operation of the Civic Center, and we have been for years. Basically, it costs more to operate than we're taking in, in revenues. So that's the short-term problem. The larger, bigger-picture problem is that there's been very little maintenance or upgrading done on this facility, really since it was, since it was built in the early '70s. It now needs between $750,000 and $1 million in upgrades. This includes the roof replacement, water heater, furniture fixtures, sound system, bathroom, kitchen, pretty much everything in the building. We've been receiving increasing numbers of complaints over the past few years about the condition of the center, and at this point, we do not have the funds to really bring it up to the standards that it needs to be, I think the minimum standards that it needs to be to serve the public. So the closing would occur on December 31st, 2018. We'll make a decision about the property. It will be included in our facility study and programming needs assessment, so we'll make, and master plan, so we'll make a decision about the Civic Center as part of that overall facility's study. The, it's staffed by several part-time, part-time individuals, so the, the, there'd be 1.75, full-time equivalent salary, or full-time equivalent employees lost there. The IT, the Information Technology Enterprise Fund is expected to save about $220,000 in recurring expenses. This is creation of an information technology internal services fund, so that various funds would be charged appropriately for the information technology services. And that's really a more appropriate allocation of the costs for IT, rather than it all being charged to the general fund. We propose to lease about 50 cars and pickup trucks, rather than purchasing them all outright. This is proposed, this is expected to save around $70,000 a year, and then the funds that have been reserved for purchasing those vehicles can now be applied to reducing the deficit in the general fund. The library will reduce, will reduce library funding by $55,400. The specific reductions have been decided by the library board. This reduction is proportioned to, to the library's share of the operating budget. The fire prevention inspector was being, the fire prevention inspections were being done by a part-time employee reporting to the fire department. That person retired recently, and instead of replacing his .45 FTE, employees in the Community Development Department will do the inspections and report to the fire department. So the inspections will continue to occur, they'll just be picked up by someone in CD for savings of $35,000. The unemployment comp funding is being shifted to the Retained Risk Fund for a saving of $35,000, and again, that's a case of a more appropriate allocation of the cost. The Human Relations Officer is currently budgeted at a full-time level. They've, we've actually been staffing that at a half-time level, Ms. Celia Clark, for the last few years. So we are budgeting the HRO officer at the half-time level going forward for savings of $36,000. And then individual departments were asked to reduce their budgets, and they went, they provided line-item reductions that totaled $75,000, and these items were anywhere from things like office supplies, some travel, some training. It, it, it varied from one department. department to the next, but that was a decision made at the department level. And then our voluntary separation incentive program over the past year resulted in a net of two full-time equivalent positions as well. And we expect to offer a, another version of VSIP this year as well. All told, these budget reductions reduce our recurring expenditures, and the general operating fund buys about a projection of $623,000 next year. And again, this is to, to, to better align our expenditures with projected revenues, and to really adjust to the, the new reality we're facing here in, in our municipal finances. So Elizabeth is going to give you a little more detail on some of these items.
Yep. So we're going to take a look at just a few charts and graphs, just to give you the big picture, but we'll have plenty of time in the next couple of weeks to get into more details on some specific topics. So most of these charts show fiscal year 16 and 17 actuals, estimated expenditures for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 18, and then the proposed budget for fiscal 19. So just a reminder that whenever we look at all funds together, we deduct inter-fund transfers so that we're not double counting. So that's a little different. When you look at one fund alone, we always include transfers. So this chart shows revenues for all city funds. The purple portion at the bottom is the general operating fund, and the green portion at the top is everything else. So you can see the general fund is most of everything. One thing you might notice here is that the general fund revenues decreased between fiscal 18 and fiscal 19, and that's largely due to the fact that we will receive 14 income tax payments from the state in fiscal 18. When they decided to reduce the local government share by 10%, they also, at the same time, decided to accelerate the payments to local governments to help mitigate that, at least in the first year. Also in FY18, you'll notice that revenues in other funds outside the general fund are unusually high, and that's just largely due to the timing of revenues and capital improvements funds, for example, state reimbursements for Olympia Drive and Lincoln Avenue. So looking again at all funds, and this time on the expenditure side, this is broken down by category of expenditure. And one thing you'll notice here is that the purple, purplish portion at the top, which is capital expenditures, is the thing that fluctuates the most here. And that's just because of the timing of capital improvement expenditures. Those have been as low as 5.1 million in FY17, and as high as 18.8 million in the FY18 estimated expenditures. So that's, that's a pretty normal thing to see on a chart like this for a city government. In FY18, personnel costs are about 58% of expenditures for all city funds. Total expenditures for personnel increased by about 1.7%. And that includes health insurance increases, which are expected to be relatively large this year, and pension So focusing in on the general fund a little bit, this is our general fund revenues by source. General fund revenues are about 33.2 million. As you can see, the reddish-purple piece kind of at the top right is sales and use tax revenue. That's nearly a third of all of our revenues in the general fund. So that's pretty significant. That's a real concern for us, because sales tax growth has been very weak the last few years at least, and we don't really see any change in that coming in the near future. So that's just something to be aware of. We expect that sales tax revenues are going to grow by about 1% in fiscal 19. We also expected about 1% growth in FY18, but we're not going to quite achieve that. And that's largely due to the state's imposition of a 2% collection fee on our home rule sales tax revenues. Without that, we would have been right around 1%. Property taxes in the green are about 13% of the general fund revenues. But again, there's, there's been the threat out there in the state legislature of tax caps being imposed on home rule municipalities, so that could be impacted in the future. Also, you should be aware that most property tax revenue that comes into the general fund is passed through directly to pension funds. So over half of the general fund property tax revenues goes right back out within a couple of days and into the pension fund bank accounts. Income tax, the, I'm going to call it the dusty purple piece near the bottom there is about 12% of general fund revenue. This is a state shared revenue. It was on the chopping block for FY18. Right now, our expectation is that that 10% reduction will continue right on through into FY19. If that doesn't happen, we'll be very happy, but we're not going to count on getting that money back. So there's a whole section in the budget book called the revenue analysis section, and if, if y'all are interested in revenues, I suggest giving that a look. This is general fund expenditures, again, by classification, similar to the chart we looked at for all funds. So in the general fund, 73% of our expenditures are for personnel costs. That includes salaries, all benefits, such as health insurance, and pension costs. Our general fund personnel expenditures are actually decreasing a little bit next year by about a half of 1%. This is due to budgeting very modest wage increases, and also partly due to the reassignment of IT positions to a separate fund. But even with that in there, it would have been a very, very modest increase. Total expenditures in the general fund will decrease next year by more than $300,000. Inter-fund transfers, which are the green portion near the top, are the next largest category of expense at 13 and 1/2%, right behind personnel. So this is because the general fund provides funding for a variety of activities in other city funds, including capital improvement expenditures. There are no capital expenditures in the general fund itself, since those are either in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, or one of the capital improvement funds for infrastructure and facilities. So looking at the fund balance, the bars show the ending fund balance in the general operating fund, and the white line there shows our, our policy of maintaining a fund balance of 15% of recurring expenditures. Our goal in dollars for FY2019 is about 4.9 million. We're very close to that target this year, not quite there. As you can see in this chart, our fund balance decreased significantly between FY16 and FY17. That was because in FY17, at the end of the fiscal year, we took all the money that was related to the hospital property tax issue, and we moved it into a special reserve fund, just to be a little more transparent about what really is general fund reserves. Oh, and then looking at recurring revenue and expense in the general fund, you can see that next year, the recurring revenue is 33.1 million in the general fund, recurring expense is 32.9 million. So we're a little bit lower than the level of recurring revenue at about 99%. However, as we know, we have this structural deficit. Our revenues are growing more slowly than our expenditures, so we're still going to face challenges, even with that little bit of gap between recurring revenue and expense.
So looking ahead, we are going to offer voluntary separation incentives again, with some tweaks, probably some tweaks in, in the program. We're going to review all open positions when they come open, to see if there's, there's any changes or savings that can be achieved. We'll be looking at different revenue options, particularly for transportation improvements. Again, we have a tremendously high backlog of infrastructure needs that haven't been addressed, and we expect to come forward with some options for city council to, to consider. Other budget reductions may be necessary, and we're also going to be focusing, continue to focus our efforts on sustainable growth and increasing the tax base. So in the long run, we should have some revenue increases as well. Again, this is all designed to position us for the future, for addressing the structural budget deficit, to adequately fund our pensions, to rebuild our reserves, and to really build a foundation that we can, that we can count on and build on going into the future. So there will be a lot of questions about this, about this budget. Next week, Elizabeth will be presenting more detailed information about the pension funding and implications of, of our proposal, as well as some updates in our financial policies. Public Works Department will be presenting the capital improvement plan and providing more information about the Civic Center. Then on June 4, Celeste Schot will be presenting the library budget. Will be giving you more information about the vehicle leasing proposal, and Todd Rint will describe what the staffing reorganization has, has meant for the city going forward. June 4, there will be a public hearing on the budget. Between June 5 and 7, Elizabeth and I will be presenting five budget briefings for employees, essentially what we're doing here tonight, but during the day and in the evening, to give an opportunity for all employees to, to hear the same information, accurate information, and to ask questions. June 11 is when the budget would be considered by the committee of the whole, and June 18 would be the date to adopt the budget, approve the budget amendments, and approve the revised Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Who's got the chair?
Dennis.
Yes. Diane, what would, what would you say would be the most significant part of the budget that you look forward to for increasing revenue here in the community, for the city of Urbana?
The revenue increases?
Yeah.
The only one proposed in the budget is going to be the parking meter increase, and then the modest fee increases.
So it might depend upon potential economic growth change here in the community, but there's nothing else right now that...
No tax increases are proposed this year.
Eric?
So I probably need some education on leasing versus purchasing vehicles, because I know for my personal use, purchasing is a lot more economical than leasing. So why, is, is there a quick way to tell us why for a fleet leasing is, is more economical than purchase?
I'm glad you said that, because this is one of those cases where you cannot apply your personal experience to, to a fleet experience. And everyone has, I totally agree with you. On a personal level, I think we would all shy away from leasing, but on a fleet level, it's a different story.
So I'm going to, I'm going to give you a really quick answer, because we're going to spend time talking about this more in a couple of weeks. I, I wouldn't say that one is better than the other, but given our financial situation, the fact that we haven't set aside adequate funds in our vehicle and equipment replacement fund to have the cash on hand to, to replace all of the vehicles that we're going to need to replace, I think this makes sense for us now.
The VERF is one of those funds that was borrowed from over the years.
If I could just follow up on that, just so we have enough information to ask questions in two weeks. So will that include police vehicles, these 50 vehicles that we want to start leasing?
So the 50 that we're looking at currently do not include police interceptor vehicles, so no squad cars, but other passenger vehicles up to pickup trucks. And also, I mean, it doesn't include things like, you know, fire trucks, dump trucks, heavy equipment, that kind of thing. But that is, you know, something we could consider in the future. There, there are companies now that will lease emergency response vehicles, where in the past, that was not an option. They, they wouldn't do it because they, they felt the risk was unacceptable.
Okay. I noticed in the, in the VERF breakdown, it looked like there's 20 or 30 police vehicles we're going to replace anyway. We're going to buy, right?
Yes.
And the average life on those is three years?
I think it's three or four. What do you think, Sylvia?
In the table, it said three.
Okay, then it is three if the table says three.
So with the ones that we lease, the pickup trucks and other vehicles, would the life on those be longer because they don't get as much use?
Yeah, the, the life on those, what we're looking at is probably five years. And that just has to do with the life cycle costs. We want, we want to, you know, get the best years out of them, but dispose of them before the maintenance costs start to creep up, and the, the value of the vehicle for resale starts to plunge. So we're going to be looking for a life cycle that makes financial sense in terms of minimizing our cost.
And we'll continue to do the maintenance in-house.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Erin?
So the position that is currently held by Ms. Clark, the human relations position, if we budget it at half-time, when Ms. Clark has moved on, and we need a human relations officer, what is the long-term plan to address that? I guess I'm suggesting that we just keep it where it is, and the extra funds that are there, we use them where we may need them, as opposed to cutting it, because then we have to put it back when we want to, to hire someone full-time in that position in the future. So just a thought, I don't know if we need to actually...
Yeah, I mean, clearly, if, if she left and we decided we needed to fill that position full-time, we would have to then increase the budget to be able to do that. I think, you know, it's an evaluation we undertake.
But the money is there now. We, we budget for it now, right?
We've budgeted for it in FY18, but not in FY19.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Instead of changing it, we would keep it there. And then we know that we're not paying it out FT unless there's some legal concerns that we have in relationship to that, which I don't think we do. Then the excess funds, we could use it to earmark it for something else, right?
Well, if, if we budget it for that position, we really can't earmark it for anything else. I, I guess I'm not quite sure.
I don't know. I thought if you didn't use the money, any money that you've, unless there's some legal reason why we couldn't.
Yeah. If, if we don't, if we don't spend money in the budget, it just returns to fund balance, and then it's available for allocation in the future. But because, you know, the budget is one way that we control our finances, we like to budget as accurately as possible, and provide a realistic plan for what we expect to spend. But sure, it's possible, we could do that.
But we also budget so that we have a little rainy day fund too, right? So that means that you're budgeting in excess of what you actually need in order to create a rainy day fund, right?
No, those, those actually aren't. So budgeting, when you're talking about budgeting, you're talking about revenues and expenditures.
Okay.
Those are not budgeted, so that's not available to spend, and that's, that's sort of the nature of it. If we really had to tap in that money, it would be appropriate for us to have to come back to council and ask for that permission to dip into that. So no, we, we don't budget that money.
Okay. One other thing for me, the 50K for the landscaping that we would set aside from the increase in the parking fees. I agree that 1986 is a long time. It's nice to only have to pay a quarter, but I don't think 50 cents is going to be a whole lot more for people to pay. The total amount that we expected for that to generate is more than 50, though, right?
It's about 85,000?
So I was just thinking about some of the needs that we have, whether it's minor street repairs, or even the program that we have now for individuals who get stopped and they have minor equipment violations or something like that. It just seemed like to be, seemed to be a lot to take a parking increase that's going to be applied throughout the entire city, and then give more than almost 70% of the funds created to, for flowers downtown. Am I missing something about...
Well, this is more than just flowers. This pays the seasonal workers that we typically hire every summer to do, to do landscaping work. The, the money that it's not used for the seasonal workers will go toward... the seasonal workers will go toward the parking fund, which is a separate fund, that's not in the general fund, but that goes to maintain our other parking lots, parking facilities, parking meters, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and it's, and this isn't an increased citywide. As you know, other areas of the city are, are already at higher rates, particularly campus. So this is just really the downtown area.
Okay. I thought it was, okay, that's fine. Yeah, that, I had another question, but I'll ask. This is more, that's a question I can ask offline. But that's it for me.
On parking, I noticed the U of I announced today they were gonna go to the mobile meter system, so everybody will have the same system. Currently, do we charge anything for people that park on Springfield between Birch and Bucy? I see a lot of cars there during the day. And I don't think there's any parking permits or anything you have to buy there, do they?
I, I don't think that area is regulated currently. And, and I, in fact, I think the mayor asked me about that.
I ask about that every year, actually.
So, so, so here's the thing. I've had some experience with regulating parking in my previous life. And it's very hard to regulate just a very small area, because, so let's say we decide to regulate that area, which is a few blocks, perhaps. Then what's gonna happen is all those people who are parking there are just gonna jump probably to the next block up or the next block over. So, it's something we could look at, but we'd really need to think about how the regulation is gonna change people's behavior to make sure we get the result that we really want.
And if we're using the, the apps for the new, for any new parking areas we make, do we have a policy whether we just put up a sign and say, "Use the app," or whether we put in a meter, or both, or does that come up?
Bill will jump in if, if he doesn't agree. But I, but I think, long-term, that's a discussion we're going to have to have, because our, our meter, our meter infrastructure is aging. I think they're actually, I think Duncan, who provides the mechanisms that go inside the meters, is no longer making that particular mechanism. So I think that's a discussion we'll need to have moving forward about whether, you know, over time, we're gonna phase out meters. They're very expensive. I mean, particularly compared to the cost of using mobile meter, which, we just take a sign.
And I'm sure several of us will have questions about the closing of the Civic Center, but that's next week, did you say? We're gonna talk about that? Okay. Dean.
What percentage do we get of traffic tickets?
I'd have to look into that. I think it's different for different, it's not just like a flat amount.
Different for different offenses?
Yeah.
Would you be able to tell me roughly? Well, let me first say that I understand traffic stops are down quite a bit. Would you be able to tell me how that's affecting our contributions to the Police Department funds?
I don't know that there's a really direct relationship. Obviously, it's Police Department activities that lead to that revenue, but because the general fund is really one pot of money, it's not necessarily like we, you know, we look and say, "Oh, you know, Chief Morgan, traffic fines are down, so we need to cut your budget." It's not that direct a relationship. But I'll see if I can get you some information about what's happening with that.
Okay, thank you.
Eric.
So, now that, you know, infrastructure costs for instituting new parking, revenue parking would be much lower, we really ought to think about monetizing parking in that space, north of Springfield, south of University, east of Lincoln, and west of downtown. Because it's full every day of people who are parking there and walking either to the campus or walking to Carl. And I sympathize, I, you know, it's nice for them to have absolutely free parking, but, in point of fact, it, it may not be appropriate.
Aaron.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions that I skipped over here about the, the website and the software. I didn't see, does it, do you know, at this point, who will be doing the update for the website?
No.
Is that gonna be an RFP?
Probably, yes.
And the software will come, you don't know where that's coming from yet either?
Which, I don't know which soft, there was a, there was...
Not the licensing, well, either one of them. There was one for the, the guy with the...
Schedule.
For the, yeah, the time sheets and scheduling and stuff like that. And then there was another one for licensing software.
Yeah, I believe for the scheduling and timekeeping, there would be a request for proposal process. The, the licensing software, we actually have pricing on that as part of our contract with Tyler Technologies for the MUNIS system. So that would more or less be taking the next step under our current contract with Tyler. And, but we could elect to do a competitive process. It probably makes sense, though, to have that integrated with the financial system so that all the revenue information flows back and forth.
I think, certainly, I can see how it makes sense if it's coming from the same, same company. But we don't have a contract with them for them to supply what we're talking about now, the $12,000 upfront costs.
Yeah, there are, there are, so, in our current, in our current contract with Tyler, we have pricing for a number, number. So when we did that, we knew that we couldn't afford to do everything that we would need to do in the first year, or even the few first two years. So in that contract, we actually have locked in pricing for additional modules, like licensing and fixed assets, other things that we knew we would probably want to do when our budget allowed us to do that, that needed to be integrated with the financial system. So, yeah, we have that pricing locked in, and it's in our contract with them.
And so, they gave us a cost on a contract that could include...
No, they, they gave us a contract that guaranteed pricing for those additional modules. Yeah. It's, and, and basically, the contract says we can do those at our option any time during the term of the contract.
Well, I know some of the...
All this time, nobody told me my mic was off, and that must be a sign, even, all right.
Were you saying something?
Yeah. So, the contract, though, if it has separate modules in it, like two or three other agreements, basically, that's what you're saying, like for different licensing?
No, it's, so it's one agreement to implement the financial system, to implement the payroll system. And then there are other, when I say modules, I mean other sort of less essential parts of a financial management system that we would like to do, but we couldn't commit to doing in the first year. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone else going once, going twice? Okay, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I don't think there is any. Reports of standing committees. Councilmember Erin Ammons.
So, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move ordinance number 2018-05-032 forward with a recommendation for approval. Do I need to...
Second, please.
A second.
Moved by Erin, seconded by Bill. Any discussion?
Am I supposed to do this part of it?
No, I do this.
Are you sure?
I'm running the needle.
Okay.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Yes, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes, that motion passes.
Ordinance number 2018-05-035, an ordinance approving and amended and restated right-of-way license agreement with MDCJ LLC Public Works. On behalf of the committee, I so move...
Second.
Moved by Erin, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Resolution number 2018-05-017R. On behalf of the committee, I so move...
Second.
Moved by Erin, seconded by Mary Alice. This is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant for Market at the Square SNAP double value program. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Ordinance number 2018-02-0... Did I skip? Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution number 2018-05-018R. Resolution approving the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium FY 2018-2019 annual action pla, plan. On behalf of the committee, I so move...
I'll second.
Moved by Erin, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Ordinance number...
That motion passes.
Ordinance number 2018-02-013. An ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, rezoning a portion of 500 Art Bartel Road from CRE to R4. Plan case number 23330M-18 was brought before the Committee of the Whole on 2/26/18 and 5/14/2018.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Was that... That was Dean. Dean?
Yep.
Moved by Erin, seconded by Dean. Any discussion?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Erin did not move that.
As committee chair, you did not move it?
That's correct.
All right, is there someone else who will move this?
I will move it with recommendations to approve.
Okay. Moved by Dean, seconded by...
I'll second.
Bill? Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Ordinance number 2018-02-014. An ordinance approving and denying requests for waivers for subdivision regulations 500 Art Bartel Road. Plan case number 2335-S-18.
Did you not move that either?
No, I did not.
Is there a motion for approval?
I will motion to send that for approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Eric. Further discussion?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yeah, this case is kind of a difficult one because, because of political overtones. If you look at it, it just has a request for approving and correcting zoning to become consistent. I don't think there can be a problem with that. It allows for the current use to continue, but it also allows for new use. So, I'm approving it because I don't want to politicize zoning. But I do recommend that the, the county board be very cautious about making a decision about the future of the nursing home. I went to, I attended the presentation by the potential owners, who had some rather disturbing comments about their interest in the, the real estate, but not so much managing the day-to-day activities within the building itself, because they are going to be sublet out to a third party for which they take no personal responsibility. So I think that this is, I'm not gonna hold this up because of zoning or politicize it, but I think that this is a really serious decision for the community, and I wish the county board the very best.
Mary Alice, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to refresh my memory in terms of what we were going to do with the sidewalk. I believe the subdivision required sidewalks on both sides, and there was conversation about having a sidewalk at least on one side. And I, I was trying to pull it up. Actually, it just finally pulled up. In the, in this specific item that we're moving, is there a discussion in terms of the sidewalk?
Lori Pearson can address that.
What the ordinance before you indicates is that there would be a sidewalk constructed within two years of recording of the plat on one side. And then, should the area be further subdivided in the future, then there would need to be a sidewalk on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Erin, Erin.
Lori, you said, should the area be changed or developed any further in the future? Are there any discussions, or maybe Deb or somebody else can answer this question, about that space or that, that parcel being turned into some other sort of subdivision or apartment complex, or anything like that?
Are you referring to the nursing home lot?
Yes, I am.
No, not with us. There hasn't been any conversation about subdivision of that lot. We use that term subdivision to indicate should the remainder of the, is it 60 acres? I think it is. If there, if the county desires to subdivide out another lot in that giant area. We wanted to be sure that a sidewalk would be constructed on the opposite side of the street. But we haven't had any conversations about that.
Ms. Bucy, do you know the answer to that question?
I would say no.
No? Okay.
I mean, there is no further subdivision.
Could you speak into the microphone, Deb? This is Deb Bucy, County Administrator.
There's no further plan to further subdivide the parcel that you're looking at, and no other plans at the county level of subdividing any of the rest of the 60 acres at this point either.
And to be specific, my question is this developer who is coming in, this potential buyer, has there been any discussions about them at some point, say 10 years down the line, saying that they don't want a nursing home anymore and turn that parcel into a housing complex, apartment complex, or whatever it is? Has there been any discussions like that?
No. All of our discussions with the purchaser indicate he intends to operate this as a long-term care skilled nursing facility into the future.
But there's nothing in the RFP year that keeps that, keeps the nursing home a nursing home after a certain amount of time?
10 years.
10 years. Okay. Thank you.
Eric?
But just to clarify, the governmental body, should these plans move forward, the governmental body with which the owner of that property will deal is us, not the county.
Correct. Any other questions, discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ammons.
Reports of special committees? Reports of officers? Okay. Under new business, we have resolution number 2018 dash zero five dash zero one nine R, which is a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Illinois Housing Development Authority abandoned property program. And the revised version of the resolution was handed out to you tonight.
So this resolution refers to the possibility of the City of Urbana accepting funding from the state in the amount of $55,000 for the abandoned properties program. Round three of that program in particular, we were previously awarded for $71,000 under round two, and this funding would go on top of that amount for the demolition of abandoned and blighted residential properties in the City of Urbana. We've currently used the second round of funding for demolition of two structures in the City of Urbana. And other eligible costs besides demolition include general maintenance of abandoned residential structures. The options before the city council are the usual options, approval of the resolution, approval of the resolution with suggested changes, or not approving the resolution. In terms of fiscal impacts, this would not add any financial burden to the city, and it would actually be an injection of funds to complement our existing services to our neighborhoods. And programmatically, this would augment the five-year consolidated plan that the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium has established, and specifically with regards to preserving and supporting Urbana's neighborhoods as vibrant places to live. At the regular meeting of the Urbana Community Development Commission, the CDC voted unanimously to recommend approval of the resolution, along with any changes needed to reflect the final form of the funding agreement, which was not finalized at the time that it was brought to the CDC. As you've noticed, I passed out a revised resolution. That was because the state had passed along new sample text to be used as a resolution to authorize our executive officer to execute the funding agreement. So I worked with the legal division. We were able to incorporate that language into our format, and the final product is what you see before you. With that in mind, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the city council might have.
Is there a motion to get this on the floor, and then we'll have discussion?
I'll second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Dennis. Any questions? Mary Alice?
So I think last year when this came up, the, it was discussed in terms of how the money was used, and it said it could be reimbursed for items that we had already demolished or we had already done that fell in the parameters of this grant. So my question is, are we going to basically reimburse ourselves for items that we've already done? Or are there certain properties that are being targeted with these funds?
This is going to be going forward for specific properties.
And do you have in mind which properties?
We do, yes. We've been working with the Building Safety Division to identify abandoned and blighted properties in the city that would be good candidates for this program.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Aaron?
The areas or the properties that you have identified, are any of them in TIF districts?
Um, that's a, that's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head, you know, how much, how many of them would overlap with the boundaries of the TIF districts?
It would be interesting to know the answer to that, because I believe the, one of the fundamental reasons why TIF districts were created were to address blight, right? So it would be interesting to see if there's a way to incorporate TIF funds into some development as well, something like that.
Absolutely.
Jared?
Matt, could you just talk a little bit about, I'm just curious what the process is? Building Safety identifies a structure that has been abandoned or so on and so forth. I guess there's repeated attempts made to contact a homeowner or a property owner after failing for a certain amount of time. Where do, we just decide we're going to go on their property and raise whatever structure they have there? I'm sure there's, it's more-
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm sure there's more to it than that. I'm just curious what that process is.
There's no, you know, I guess, there's no consistent, there's, we have strategies of working with the Building Safety Division on that, but no two cases are really the same, and I'm sure John would be willing to reflect on that a little bit more.
There's a couple of factors that we consider. You know, our staff tracks how long properties are abandoned. Our housing staff makes multiple attempts to contact property owners, relatives of the property owners. We do title search to determine who the relatives are. Then we also consult with our legal staff to determine the viability of the city. Part of the process is we need to be able to acquire it through demolition or judicial deed from abandonment. So the whole idea is we try to work with the, any owner or any, any person having ownership rights, make them aware that they do have ownership rights, and find out if they're interested in maintaining those ownership rights and pursuing them through airship or something like that. And if they're not, then we proceed to go to court as an abandoned property, and then we acquire it at that point. You know, we have a list of properties, but we're always trying to work with the owner. And some of them are owners that we actually had contact with in the last several years, but they've just kind of stopped responding to our contact. So there's a process we go through. We meet as a group, identify which ones are the most likely, the ones are the largest problems in the neighborhood. It also involves public works, because they do environmental abatement. So if there's weeds, trash buildup, things of that nature. Another complicating factor is if the property is open to intrusion, we might have to get a search warrant to go in and board up that property. So everything adds up to cost, and we identify which ones are the most costly, and work with our legal staff to move forward in that regard. And this funding really helps out a lot.
I'm just, the reason why I was curious about it is because there's one particularly large abandoned property here in the downtown area that I think is on a lot of people's minds. And when I saw this on the thing, I don't know why, I didn't really think of it last year, but it just made me think, you know, what, obviously, I'm sure that property owner we are in touch with, but clearly has abandoned that property and has done so for quite some time. I was curious where we're, what legal action, if this is the pursuit with other ones, we might have in that situation.
At the current state of that building, one of the things that you might have noticed, that some of the faux railings around the outside were removed. That was part of the process. We were concerned that those were going to fall down. So our housing inspection staff required those to be removed and abated, and they also have to apply for appropriateness to either leave them like that or to proceed to replace them. In either case, they have to work with the Historic Preservation Commission on that and our planning staff. The other part of it is we've done inspection, internal inspection with the fire department. We've identified code violations that need to be mitigated in order for anyone to be even inside the building. And we continue to pursue compliance in that regard. So it's the owner's decision whether or not he operates the hotel as a hotel. What we do is we make sure, as a staff, as a code enforcement staff, that we ensure that the inside of the building is in compliance with code.
Thanks.
Dennis?
So if a building such as that is for sale and on the market, is that considered abandoned?
No.
Jim?
There's another component. There's another component to the process. As John indicated, there's a full court process if that needs to be initiated. Not only does it provide due process, typically one of the elements for obtaining a demolition order is that the value of the building is less than the cost of the repairs. I doubt that would be the case in this instance. The owner has not abandoned. When issues are brought to his attention, he does, for the most part, take care of them. We had an alarm situation. He took care of that. I'm not sure if he's completed an elevator situation, but he's working on that. So I don't think this would qualify even, it would even be close for the court to consider this an abandoned structure.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is resolution number 2018 dash zero five dash zero two R. Resolution approving and authorizing an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement, Rosecrance TBRA Tenant-Based Rental Assistance for Fiscal Year 2018-19.
Yeah, this resolution is, again, fairly self-explanatory. It would allow the City of Urbana to use its allocation of Home Investment Partnership Program, a federal funding source, to execute a contract with Rosecrance that would allow them to continue their existing tenant-based rental assistance program. The amount of the contract is a little over $35,000, and it would estimate, as an estimate, it would assist about 10 households, usually individuals in this case, especially with tenant-based rental assistance programs. Just as more background on that, Rosecrance is one of our three funded tenant-based rental assistance providers in the community, along with Courage Connection and the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. This proposed agreement would add funding to the existing program that was previously funded on October 20th of last year. And we estimate that this, that this agreement would give the program another eight to nine months, at which time they can be, the program can be reassessed and additional funds potentially provided. Again, the options before the city council are to approve the resolution, approve the resolution with suggested changes, or not approve the resolution. In terms of fiscal impacts, the amount would, in addition to one addition, one other whole house rehabilitation activity, would fully commit our fiscal year 16-17 allocation of home funds, which would allow us to meet the home commitment deadline, which has been suspended by HUD, but we do consider it a good grants management practice to continue to meet the deadline of committing each allocation of home funds within two years of receiving them. So then that would leave the city's existing allocation of 17-18 home funds and the allocation that we expect to receive in 18-19, this upcoming August, from the federal government. With that in mind, in terms of programmatic impacts, tenant-based rental assistance is a key goal in the five-year consolidated plan, especially for assisting extremely low-income households in the City of Urbana and in the community in general. And that would refer to households making less than 30% of annual, annual average, annual median income, sorry. Again, the Community Development Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of this resolution. It's April 24th meeting, and the minutes are reflected in the packet regarding the abandoned properties program. There were a few changes to the agreement that we would like to mention. Article three, paragraph F, referred to matching funds. We're working with Rosecrance on that. We do have a considerable match surplus, so we can cover that if Rosecrance isn't able to provide matching funds, so that we're still working on. But otherwise, yeah, the agreement is included in the packet. And Julie Cartel from Rosecrance is in the audience and is able to answer questions if you have any for her. Otherwise, I can answer any on the city's end.
Mary Alice?
So I'm a little confused. This is an eight-to-nine month extension. Is that correct? Is it typical to do an eight-to-nine month extension versus an annual basis?
It's, it's just hard to tell exactly how often TBRA, or how rapidly TBRA funds are expended. It's sort of an inexact science, so it's sort of an estimate of how long it's going to last. We were more aiming towards closing out the 16-17 grant allocation than looking at a specific one-year allocation of TBRA funds.
So theoretically, if as long as the 16- to 17-year is closed out, then the next funding would be for an annual versus an eight? It just seems a little odd to do this eight-to-nine month.
It is, but it's, our, one of our main goals with grants management, in terms of the home funds, are making sure that they're committed within two years. And we wanted to establish that with this program. And, you know, potentially, once it's closed out, we can evaluate additional funds, and obviously based on performance as well. Rosecrance has been performing very well in terms of providing us what we need for meeting the federal requirements for operating this program. But we can then address that with our 17-18 allocation. And potentially, this could last a year, and we could be here next spring to work on that.
So if I just use round numbers here, I know we're doing eight-to-nine months, but let's say it's 10 months, because that makes it quite round, right? $350 bucks. So $350 a month per household. And perhaps, this is a question for the funding agency, what proportion of rent does that cover for households?
So the, the home regulations make sure that it covers, in sort of a reverse way, the household pays no more than 30% of its annual median income for household expenses. And that's a requirement from the federal government. That's just the way TBRA works.
So it uses a federal allocation, the poverty line is done by 30%, 33% for housing?
For this program, it's median income, but exactly.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Dennis, and then Dean.
So this agreement could help potentially 10 households, it indicates. How many households have applied who are on a waiting list who could be helped if we had yet more money?
I'm going to refer that question to Julie. That's, yeah. Probably be, you know, something from the agency in terms of the waiting list.
Right. Best-case scenario, if we didn't have to worry about the money, how many people, how many households do you see in, I guess it'd be Champaign-Urbana or the county, as needing assistance at this time?
We don't have a, we don't have a waiting list right now, but part of that is because we try and manage not to have a waiting list. We let people know if we think our funds are expended, we have as many families that we could possibly serve right now. We could easily double that. I mean, if there were funds, we could easily double the number of people we are serving. There is such a need.
There is such a need.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Housing affordability is a key concern throughout Champaign County.
Dean, and then Bill?
This is a very minor point of order, just in case it matters. The resolution number is 2018 dash zero five zero two zero R, and it was just said as zero two R, so I just wanted to correct that.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Bill?
So in the township, we're temporarily housing people in hotel rooms sometimes. So are those people qualified to apply for the TBRA?
It could be considered a next step, sort of. Being in a hotel on a temporary basis, it would sort of fall more under the category of transitional housing. Usually, in terms of HUD's, I guess, definitions, the next step from that would be permanent supportive housing or its equivalent tenant-based rental assistance. It's sort of taking one step into the private housing market towards self-sufficiency and having part of the rent subsidized for someone who's trying to, you know, get education, get a job, and build themselves up.
So is this the same as the Moving to Work program?
No, that's, that's from the Housing Authority of Champaign County. There are no work requirements with this program. Income is treated the same if it's social security disability or whatever it may be.
Then I had a question about attachment three, the quarterly report template.
Yes.
I know I've seen quarterly reports from Rosecrance before, and they're pretty adequate. They tell you what they're doing, everything. So this is a blank page. Does that just mean that we leave it up to them to report what they want?
We are actually, we're working on finalizing that document, but we, I actually sent that to Julie earlier today. It's basically a spreadsheet that we're looking at, names of the clients. We're looking at when the lease begins, when the lease ends. We're looking at, you know, total, what TBRA is paying for, what the client is paying for, total rent, security deposits, you know, we're keeping track of all of that information. So I definitely apologize, but I can send that forward if you have any questions.
I just figured it was up to them and we'd-
No, 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 that's, yeah, we're hammering something out, and we think we have a report template that we can make work.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'll move.
Oh, we need a motion. Sorry. I'll move. Moved by Mary Alice?
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu? Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you.
Next up is ordinance number 2018 dash zero five dash zero five three six. An ordinance approving a special use permit for 1007 West University Avenue, which is the Green Street Realty Project, Plan Case 2343SU18. Lori Pearson, Planning Manager.
Thank you. This is a special use permit before you, because multifamily residential requires a special use permit in the B3, General Business District. What is being proposed is at the location of Nero Zero's. It's about a 1,000-square-foot building now. Proposed is commercial on the ground floor and four stories of apartments above, a total of 24 apartment units, one and two-bedroom mix. Um, I guess in terms of details, I'll pull up the site plan. So it might be a little bit hard to read because there are a lot of details on here, but, um, here's University Avenue, here's the site. Just off to the west is a parking lot owned by the University of Illinois Foundation. Uh, to the south is a, an alley, and the building is proposed toward the southern portion of the site in this area with parking, uh, to the north and also under the building here to the east. I'll get to the elevations here. Uh, these are really conceptual elevations at this stage. The applicant wanted to, um, give you an idea of what the building could look like. They also indicated that it would be very similar to the building that is also along University Avenue, but on the Champaign side, near Fifth Street, relatively newer building, um, predominantly brick. This one would have more glass than that building. But what is proposed is, as I said, commercial on the ground floor currently written as retail or an office use, um, and I'll get to that in a moment, why that's important. But on May tenth, the Plan Commission held a public hearing for this case. They found that the approval criteria were met, and they recommended approval with three conditions, one of them being that the zoning regulations would be met, the second one being that, uh, would set the number of units at about twenty-four, and that the site layout be a little bit flexible so that the applicant could potentially apply for variances to allow that what currently is shown as a retail space to become a restaurant in the future, but that would probably require variances from parking as well as if they wanted a drive-through, variances on the drive-through length. So Plan Commission wanted to be sure that that commercial space was viable, so wanted to be sure that the layout could be flexible. Um, so that was the Plan Commission recommendation for approval, and staff would concur with that recommendation. And, uh, unfortunately, the applicant couldn't be here tonight, but I will attempt to answer all of the questions that you might have.
Jared?
Uh, before discussion, I'll make a motion. Uh, for ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero five dash zero three six, an ordinance approving a special use permit for one thousand seven West University Avenue, Green Sheet Realty under Plan Case two-three four-three SU eighteen, be forwarded with recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? Mary Alice? Dennis?
Mary Alice?
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. Um, can you pull back where the commercial, I think it was one of the very first slides? I thought I heard you say that the commercial would be facing the south? Is that correct?
Um, so this is the current configuration, university and then Nero's is here.
Right.
And are you referring to the site plan, perhaps?
Yes.
This document?
Yes.
The one that is difficult to read? Uh, University Avenue is here, so the building would be this whole area on the southern portion of the site. It would be facing university, but I just wanted to give you an idea that it's on the southern portion of the site.
So then, that means that rather than, because I think one of the references was a building that was on between, what, fifth and sixth up there in university on the north side? Is that the building they're referencing?
Um, no, I'm sorry, I should have been more specific. Um, south side and it's between, um, is it between fourth and fifth? It could just be east of fifth, so it's on the south side.
It's not the one that basically touches the Thai restaurant?
You know, I see it many days, and I can't exactly picture that. It is the dark gray brick one, not the lighter gray one with the white railings.
It's not the crazy one?
It's not that one.
So, it's, I, I, the reason I'm asking this is because it seems a little odd to me to have the parking on university and have the building on the south side of that street, uh, I'm sorry, south side of that property, when the vast majority of the, of the large buildings that are going up on university have that front-facing on university, and it would make sense to me to do that when you have, um, the development right across the street in the water plant, um, rather than looking at a parking lot.
That was a topic of conversation during Plan Commission, and there was some back-and-forth about that very idea on whether or not the building should be set back or not. Whereas, a couple people thought that it should be brought up closer to the street. Oftentimes, that encourages walkability, for instance. Others felt that, uh, because of the environment that it's in, where there are a lot of parking lots still there along University Avenue, because it is a somewhat auto-oriented corridor, that setting the building back was appropriate because it would help show that there is some parking available for that commercial, for that seventeen hundred square feet of commercial that's proposed. And it would also, um, others didn't like some, the fact that some of the buildings along university were so close to the street because of the, the feeling that they're kind of, um, enclosing you a little bit too much. So that was a spirited discussion at Plan Commission.
So, and forgive me, two more questions, I promise, quickly. So, um, right along, uh, right after Dairy Queen, so it goes Nero's Eros, um, you're, and then Dairy Queen, and then there's, I call it the Einstein Bagel Building. The way the Einstein Bagel Building is built is everything is in the front, the parking is in the back. Um, I, my, my department has offices on the second floor, it's very common, people park there. Is this, uh, special use permit specific that the commercial would be on the south side of the street, or, I, I mean, that, that does concern me. I mean, the way that's gonna look on university, at the same time, I hear what the Plan Commission is saying in terms of feeling enclosed, having that corridor, being towering buildings in between, um, but I would hope that the city of Urbana would have larger setbacks than the city of Champaign currently has.
They are fifteen feet in this district.
Okay.
So that is greater than at least they used to be at the, um, on the Champaign side.
And so the question in terms of this specific site plan is what we, sorry, the, the position of the commercial building, is that what we are approving here?
Well, um, that is where the Plan Commission condition is somewhat important, in that normally we put, we as staff put forward a standard condition that says something to the effect of, uh, the construction needs to be in compliance with this, you know, in general conformance with the site plan, because we do typically want to have that fixed. Plan Commission, on the other hand, wanted to allow some flexibility there in case they wanted to, uh, reorient the building in order to allow a drive-through, for instance, to have Nero's return, or if they wanted to have a restaurant and needed to shift some things around for parking. So Plan Commission wanted to allow, uh, some flexibility there, and they realized that what is, what the, uh, special use permit is for is really to allow a residential use. It's not really to allow the commercial, because the commercial is a by right use here. So they could come in and build one story of commercial, or frankly, five stories of commercial, and it wouldn't even come before you, because they would meet all the rules of the zoning ordinance. Um, so Plan Commission decided to take the tact of, um, since this is a special use permit to allow multifamily, let's really just focus on allowing this amount of multifamily and give the applicant the opportunity to, uh, reorient some of the buildings if needed in order to make that commercial use be viable.
All right, thank you. Dennis?
Okay, Mary Alice, you are a person of my heart. This is a, this is a concern for me just as well. Um, it would be more appropriate for commercial and residential, uh, buildings along university corridor to have a suitable setback, but yet be, uh, facing the corridor and having parking in the back, because parking is always ugly, it's never neat, it's always, um, confusing or, you know, dysfunctional in some manner, and you have an approach alley behind the building. Now, it seemed to me that, that the entrance into the building, into the garage that's in the building, would be a more appropriate entrance from the back. I, I see that it does come to the alley, but also they're offering a rather gaping, gaping, um, entrance, like a double-car garage sort of entrance on the front facade as well. So, if this building were rotated ninety degrees and it was sitting kind of, um, you know, in a north-south orientation instead of a, um, east-west orientation along university, perhaps there could be a lot of, um, maybe we could like have a resolution about, um, you know, uh, that its appearance and yet not be emphasizing the fact that it's a parking lot. And any good urban planning that is occurring now in the United States is putting all the parking in the back. It's not emphasizing the parking, it's not, we don't want to be Walmart, we want to have a, uh, intelligent-looking, viable residential commercial corridor, and to put all the parking in front defeats that purpose. And I think it's a real unfortunate thing that it got this far without, um, having a, a, a serious discussion with the architect to see how they could mitigate that. And if the building is going to be facing the corridor, um, it should have a setback enough so that it's not squeezing the corridor, but it looks like it's resting appropriately on the corridor. So, these are concerns that I have, and I'm, I'm gonna say that I think there's a concerns that we should be looking at all the time when we allow, uh, commercial construction along significant streets in our community.
Aaron?
So, um, the issue that I have seen with all of the activity growing on University Avenue, starting to feel a lot like Green Street, um, that whether you're leaving out of the Burger King or Nero's Eros or Dairy Queen, it's a pretty difficult task. I mean, literally, if I pull out of the Burger King, trying to go east is just like not gonna happen. You might as well just turn right and then turn right again. So I'm just concerned about the parking lot being on the front side, it's just gonna really increase that issue, uh, for people trying to cross university to go west. Um, it's, it's just a growing concern, and I don't think we should add to that. Um, I don't wanna get into the intelligence of the design, I don't, you know, but I'm just saying that particular thing is, is a concern for me.
I wasn't sure if you saw the, um, there's actually entrance and exit to the alley as well. So there is the ability to navigate the site this way so that you could turn on Harvey and go either way.
That's, that's helpful, uh, but, uh, people are still gonna use the front facade or the front side, because that's where the bulk of the parking is, so, I mean, I guess people may figure out, hey, it's easier to get out through the alley, but, um, it, it's still gonna increase those concerns of that, that, that traffic flow on university.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the parking being in front. Um, I think if there's a commercial space there, people won't go to it if they don't think there's parking, and if they don't see the parking, they might not think there's parking. Um, I do have a question about parking, though. They, um, seem to, they, we're worried about having enough to do a restaurant use, so what's required by the residential part, twenty-three?
Yes.
And there's thirty total?
Correct.
So there's seven they can use for the commercial part right now?
Right. And restaurants, it, the ratio is one space for every one hundred square feet? So it would have to be, if it's seventeen hundred, so seventeen?
So, um, there's also those, there's some apartment buildings to the south on Clark Street, and I think the one at ten oh two is mostly one and two bedrooms. Now that we've changed the requirements for parking on the one bedrooms, um, I don't know how many one bedrooms they have at ten oh two, but if they have an extra five spaces now, because we don't require as many parking spots, would they be able to rent those to the, the new purchaser of this?
Yes, it just, uh, off-site parking needs to be within six hundred feet, and we did have a conversation with the applicant early on about that. Um, they did not come forward indicating that they had any agreements with neighboring property owners. Perhaps they could, you know, continue looking, of course, but at this point, they didn't have anything secured.
Okay.
I will say that the parking reduction did help them, though, as they are proposing four one-bedroom units, and then that means instead of providing four spaces for those units, they would only need to provide three spaces for those units.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we just keep ordinance two thousand eighteen oh five oh three six here in, um, well, we're not, this is council, um, so that the owners can come and listen to some of the concerns we have about positioning of the building and parking, and to see how flexible they are in that, and perhaps, uh, open that conversation up, that might become more something that I, I certainly, uh, I certainly like the idea of putting, um, this combination on, on university, but I think that it could be better, and a conversation with us could improve that. So I, I don't, I don't really feel excited about passing this, because if this is how it's gonna look, I don't think it's gonna really improve the appearance of Urbana on University Avenue.
I will second that.
Your motion was to, can you repeat that, please?
Uh, just, just to hold this in, uh, city council? And, and ask the, um, developer to come, because he's not here tonight, or they are not here tonight. To address some of the questions about the position of the building, may, you know, maybe if we're gonna talk about, about, um, parking in the front, I don't see any landscaping initiated into the, um, parking lot in particular, so I, maybe I'm not, I'm missing it, but...
It's not shown, but it is required.
It's required, but if it's not shown, I'm, I'm not, um, seeing it, so it bothers me.
You often don't see things at this stage of the...
Yeah, but we're approving things at this stage.
No, what you're approving is a special use permit.
Okay.
Not a site plan.
Okay.
So that was moved by Dennis?
And seconded by Mary Alice.
Seconded by Mary Alice. To carry over to next week's council meeting, can we do that, or does this need to go to committee?
I didn't hear the question.
Can this stay at the council level?
Yes.
Does this need to be, it can stay at council?
That's what the motion is, to continue to the next council meeting.
Okay, we'll continue to the next council meeting. Um, we have a motion on the floor, would you withdraw that motion, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was sure.
Dean, you agree, concur?
No.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of holding it over, because, I mean, I, I agree with Bill, and I think this is actually the situation everywhere, that if there's not parking in the front, that the commercial won't be viable, because people won't be able to see that there is parking. I think that's, uh, I mean, all of the, um, other buildings on university that have residential apartments that come right up to University Avenue, either in Champaign or in Urbana, and have parking in the back, they're purely residential. The, uh, I, I just don't think the retail will be viable if it's, uh, if there's not the parking in the front.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to continue to next council meeting, let's take care of that motion first. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How many is that? Raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Three opposed. All right. That will be held over till next week. Mary Alice, did you have a...
I, I, I just wanted to, to say to Eric that, and perhaps we should use this opportunity to look on university and see what's there. So the building one block down has businesses on the first floor, all the parking is behind. All the buildings on the north side of university in Champaign that are brand-new, that have the coffee house, that have the restaurant, all that parking is in the back. So maybe it's a good opportunity for us to just kinda look and get a lay of the land.
And remember that the issue here is a special use permit, not the sign of the site. Okay, this will be continued to next week's council meeting.
Next week or June fourth council?
June fourth council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, next week is a committee meeting.
I'd just like to say thank you, everybody.
Next up is the, um, several appointments to boards and commissions. I, um, am pleased to submit for your consideration the appointment of John Thies to the Urbana Free Library Board for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. He will take the, uh, seat of Anna Merritt, who is, um, leaving the library board after many years of service, and this follows, of course, decades of service to the community in different capacities, including serving on the Urbana School Board as well, as well as many other, other, uh, positions. So we thank her very much for her years of service to the Urbana Free Library Board. Um, Mr. Thies has been a resident of Urbana for forty, the last forty-eight years. He practices with the law firm Webber and Thies in Urbana, um, and he currently serves on numerous area boards and committees, and strongly values the Urbana Free Library. Reappointments to the Police Pension Board, Police Pension Fund Board include Shannon Clark for her term ending May thirtieth, twenty twenty, and I am recommending appointment of Elizabeth Hannan to the Fireman's Pension Board, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So...
I'll make a motion, uh, that we...
I did want to point out that the appointment of our city administrator, Carol Mitten, will be next Tuesday at a special meeting of the Urbana City Council. Due to noticing requirements, we had to post notice of her appointment for a number of days before we could vote on it. So her appointment will be brought before you next Tuesday at a special council meeting at 7:00, before the committee of the whole meeting. Staff appointments are listed on the sheet that were given you, and I also wanted to note that I would like to recommend for approval that John Schneider assume responsibilities as Community Development Services Department Director effective July 1st, 2018.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion, please.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. No further business before this council. This meeting is adjourned.